This meeting of the Jacksonville City Council will now come to order. I want to thank everyone who's come out tonight. We have a house full again. Appreciate you taking the time to come out and support. I know a lot of you are here for some of the presentations, and I want to thank all those who are watching on G10. Appreciate you tuning in to the meeting. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Robert Warden, followed by the invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to be following as always we pause this time to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day and for the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon each of us individually. We especially give thanks tonight for all the young people that will be recognized, from our sports teams to our winners of our poetry and poster and essay contest. We pray for these young people and for their future success, and we also give thanks for their families, who through their efforts have brought them this far and their accomplishments. We also always remember our marine and service members who are serving us here and around the world. We pray for their safety and we pray for their anxious families, and as always, give guidance and direction to our mayor and to our council. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting with the addition of Dee under presentations from the Lugeon Memorial Gardens Visitor Center. Pat Walker will be making a presentation.
Move for the adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion here at all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, I'm going to come around front to do some presentations this time. But the Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities in the city of Jacksonville sponsored their annual poster, poetry, and essay contest to help promote Disability Awareness Week. The theme for the contest this year was See Me or Me. Public, private, and base schools submitted 311 entries from grades K-8 through 12. The judging panel selected a winner from each participating grade, and the winner, the winning students will each receive an award certificate and a $50 gift card. Also, a teacher from each participating grade group was selected to receive an Excellence in Participation Teacher Award based on student entries that most clearly related to the theme. The Teacher Award consists of an award certificate, a $50 gift card, and a $60 in pizza gift cards for the teacher's class to have a pizza party. The winning entries are on display in the lobby out here at City Hall through Thursday, May 31st. I have with me Alex Shreve, Alexandra Shreve, who's the chairperson for the Committee on Disabilities, and I'm going to have her read off the different winners, and if you'll come on up as you're being called, and we'll present you with a certificate.
We do want to thank all the teachers. We want to thank all the teachers and the students for all their efforts. I heard from the judging committee that the entries were phenomenal. They did a great job, and the judging, they said, was very, very difficult. So we just thank you tonight for all your hard work and taking that theme, See Me or Me, to a whole new level, because that's really what it takes. If we want to break down barriers in our community and understand individuals with disabilities, we do have to see that we're more alike than we are different. So with that, we'll get started with our first entry. This was the pre-K group, and the school, the school is Infant of Prague Catholic School, and the winner is Wyatt Antoine. And the teacher from that school was Ms. Morales. Our next award winner is Malia Ausenzio, kindergarten grade level from Parkwood Elementary. The teacher was Mr. Gould. Our first grade winner is Jeremy Staub from Infant of Prague Catholic School. Teacher, Mrs. Scott. Our second grade winner is Kendall Tallman from Parkwood Elementary. Teacher, Mr. Gould. From the third grade level from Richlands Elementary, Kia Yah. Ms. South is the teacher. From our fourth grade level, Andre Ruffin from Parkwood Elementary. Teacher, Mr. Gould. From our fifth grade level, Maddie Scott from Infant of Prague School, and teacher is Ms. Regici. From the sixth grade, Rebecca McLean, Infant of Prague Catholic School. Ms. Regici, the teacher. From the seventh grade, Breann Eleanor, Infant of Prague Catholic School. Ms. Ratte. Our eighth grade winner is Victoria Guidry from Dixon Middle School. Teacher is Ms. Dibznicky. From the 10th grade level, Jacob Sanders, Southwest High School. From the 11th grade level, Caitlin Clark from Swansboro High School.
Make sure your little envelopes don't fall out of these because there's a goodie in there.
Goodie in there, that's right. Okay, so now we're going to move to the, as the mayor said earlier, the 2018 Teacher Excellence in Participation. This was for the teacher who really prompted their students to do some really great entries, and the judges could tell that. So we have a pizza party card, as we stated earlier, for the different grade levels, elementary, middle, and high. So from the elementary school, the teacher who wins the pizza party is Mr. David Gould at Parkwood.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I really enjoyed being part of this program. I was part of this awareness council in Chapel Hill and Orchard for a while, and you got to...
Thank you.
Oh, and I think I had a mention too for Mr. Gould, Katie Payne, the senior at Jacksonville High School. She's actually been working with you on this project and as a mentorship, so we just wanted to recognize her too. So thank you, Katie. So from the middle school level, we have Ms. Carol Regici, and that's Infant of Prague. For those of you that might not be aware, we are the Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities. We are a group of citizens in your community who gather, we are concerned about issues and situations in our community that impact individuals of all ages who have disabilities. So we just want to always invite the community to join us. We meet right here at City Hall, Meeting Rooms A and B, the first Wednesday of each month at 12:00 noon. So it is open to the community to come and join us, but we're here to promote community awareness and education, and we feel like the poster poetry and essay contest is a good example of what we want to do. We want to promote awareness within our schools because these are our youngest citizens, and they're going to impact everyone in the days ahead. So we just thank you for your participation tonight. Look for other things that the commission's going to be doing throughout the year, and we, again, welcome you to come and join us for a meeting. And I just wanted to sum it all up. One of the entries, as I was looking through all of those, and they were all wonderful, but somebody summed it up very well to say, "You are not defined by what I see, so please take the time to get to know me." And that's really what our community is about. Let's get to know each other, and we can come together and overcome any barriers that might hinder some of our fellow folks with disabilities, that we're all in this together. Thank you so much.
Let's have another round of applause for all the winners tonight. Next, it's a great honor here tonight to be able to recognize our Northside High School Boys Basketball Team. I would like to ask Coach Marshburn, I didn't see you here, but I'm sure you're here. There you are in the back, back there. If you would get, have your managers and anybody you want to bring forward here for this recognition that you have present today. Well, guys, thank you very much for your accomplishment. It makes our, it gives a little bit of notoriety to our city that your efforts and all have been awarded. Thank you very much. You have great leadership. I know that, I know that you all think the world of Coach Marshburn and the assistants that are involved in the program here. The Northside High School Boys Basketball Team has achieved remarkable 59-1 record over two years. That is incredible. Last year, they won the state's 2A championship, and this year, they jumped to the 3A classification, and it came with a lot of concern about being able to play in this very competitive grouping that they were boosted into. The team was questioned about the players they lost since last year, about the lack of a true big man. They all look like big men to me. And whether they matched up with a school that could be classified as a 4A school. But the team fought, and in a disappointing few seconds at the end of the game, lost 65-63. But their classy style and their dogged pursuit of an opportunity to win won them the admiration of many, especially in this community. For their excellence in achieving such a remarkable record over two years, and for their admirable play in the 2018 championship game, we salute you for your efforts and your, we hope that the future brings you a lot more wins in more ways than one, not just in basketball, but in life. And thank you very much. We'd really like to thank Mayor Phillips and all the council members and the city of Jacksonville, and thank you all for being here tonight, and congratulations to all the winners as well, not just us, but just on behalf of Northside High School, I would like to say a few things about our young men. These guys not only excel on the basketball floor, but they are very good students. The majority of these guys standing before you, they excel in the classroom. They're involved in the community. They're role models around school. They're just a group of guys that, we have 10 seniors in this group, and we have three juniors. The 10 seniors, of course, played last year on the state championship team, and you know, it's been, it's been a remarkable ride, you know. There's been years, I just completed my 35th year of coaching, and there's been years I just wanted to win two in a row. And for, you know, to think about winning 59 in a row is just pretty remarkable. I mean, you know, it's, it's having a group of guys that they come to practice, ready to practice. I didn't have to come in and coach effort. I had to come in and coach Xs and Os, plays, strategies. These guys are self-motivated. About everyone before you tonight, the seniors, we have 10, will either go on to play college football, college basketball, or go to college. All the seniors are gonna, you know, go to college somewhere. But, you know, I'm so proud of these guys and what they've accomplished and who they are. They've been great teammates. They've been great to coach. My job's been easy. This Coach Hammond's right here. He's our JV coach, but he also helps out on varsity. He can, he can tell you as well that it's just been a remarkable ride, and we thank God for the opportunities that we've received. We give him the praise, the honor, and the glory, and that's why we do it at Northside. And thank you so much, and if you get a chance next year, come out and watch us. Please do, and support us. And, you know, thank you so much here for inviting us out, and it's been a very memorable occasion for us. We were here last year, and our kids really enjoyed it. I asked them to wear their nice shirts tonight, and they did, the big group, so thank you once again. Good plan. Way to go, guys. I'll tell you what, your coach there, I don't know if y'all realize it, but he was a pretty dag-on good ball player in his own right back, you know. but we also have another basketball team here tonight. And at this time, I'd like to ask the coaches, managers, and all those involved with the Jacksonville High School Girls Basketball Team to join me up front. the 2017 defending North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A champion, Northern Guilford. It came in the third year of a streak of 20-plus wins that resulted in being a regional finalist in 2017 and a state finalist in 2018. Over that three-year span, her team has, has a record of 77 and 12. That's 77 wins and 12 losses. We won't talk about the losses. With the determination and noted aggressive behavior that caused this inspiring play brings us to that record. The final game was a mismatch by several accounts, but their coach credited them for excellent play. Several of these players are off to college, several of these players are headed off to college, play now, but several will return for another season at Jacksonville High School, which is also my alma mater also. Anyway, thank you, ladies, and congratulations on your accomplishments on the floor and in the classroom. I'm sure that all of you are really good students, and I'm going to let your coach say a word too.
Thank you, Mayor, for that reading. We're new to this. This is our first time coming to this, this meeting, so we are, we are thankful for that. Also, we do have some girls that are, that has committed already to go to the next level. We have Kennedy Todd Williams. She's already, she's just a sophomore, and she committed to play at University of Carolina the summer of her sophomore year. Kiani Gravely, she's going to go off, she's one of our seniors. We're going to be losing her. She's going to be going to Fayette State. It's not all about, yeah, it's about the hometown rivalry and all of that, but I don't look at it like that. I look at it as though we're trying to get the area seen, and we all want to be at that state game. We had a boys team at the state game, we had a girls team from Onslow County. So our goal is for, you know, we, I would like to see 1A, 2A, 3A, all of us, 4A, all of us in that, at that state game, at that level, to bring money back to, you know, Onslow County, you know, the city. So, thank you.[627.29][627.29](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for, Coach Guidry, thank you very much. Ladies, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Coach Marshburn, you still here? I need to, I need for you to come back up for a minute here. I got a little bit out of whack, break it up, so. Slight the chief, please. I'm always happy to have him come back up after he's just been up. I had to call Coach Marshburn back up again. I want to give you a little bit more, a little something else about Coach Marshburn here. We want to recognize Tony Marshburn here, who's been named North Carolina High School Athletic Association Harvey Reed Male Coach of the Year. What an honor.[684.51][684.51](APPLAUSE). Coach Marshburn has a record of 354 wins and 100 losses as Northside's only head basketball coach in the history of the school. How about that? He led the Monarchs to a 30-0 mark and a state 2A championship last year. In this past season, saw the Monarchs advance to the state 3A final, and they finished with a 29-1 record. For the two years, it has been 59-1 record, which is just incredible in basketball, and quite an accomplishment for one of our local schools and for one of our local guys. Tony grew up in the same neighborhood that I did. We actually played a little football together and basketball. Being older than he was, I had a little bit of advantage on him at that time. Anyway, Coach Marshburn was also named the Associated Press State Basketball Coach of the Year last year, and earned state coach of the year honors this year by the North Carolina Basketball Coaches Association. What an honor. Additionally, he was named the Daily News Boys Basketball Coach of the Year for the second consecutive season. Journalists and colleagues will all praise the coach and his team for the handling, handling the disappointing loss that they faced at the end of this season. We want to celebrate the accomplishment of two great seasons, and wish and hope he has a lot longer career ahead of him. And again, we can't say how much, how proud we are of what he's been able to accomplish at Northside High School and through his career as a basketball coach and a, and a teacher at, in the, at the high school level. Tony, congratulations again.[785.63][785.63](APPLAUSE). That's, that's quite a career, quite a career there. For the last presentation, or the next presentation, not the last one, but I would ask Chief Mike Gennaro, Director of Public Safety, and Corporal Copeland Mills.[807.51][807.51](APPLAUSE). And your, and your family.[810.13][810.13](APPLAUSE). Ms. Mills. Corporal Copeland Mills is a native of Jacksonville, North Carolina, and upon a graduation from high school, he accepted a job with the Onslow County School System. He also worked as a security guard at Jacksonville Mall while attending basic law enforcement training at Coastal Carolina Community College. He began his law enforcement career at Jacksonville Police Department in December of 2005, serving in the patrol division. He accepted a specialized position in the community services division in serving as a community officer, a dare officer, and a school resource officer. Copeland Mills' tenure at the Jacksonville Police Department has resulted in 13 years of positive law enforcement contacts, interactions, and partnerships in our community, particularly with the youth in our, our community. And my hat's off to you, Copeland, for all the work that you've done. Your students have always raved about Officer Mills over there at the school, and I know you've done a great job, and you're, you will be sorely missed within the ranks of Jacksonville Police Department. But I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and I would like to award you at this time, first off, with the badge that you wore as a Jacksonville Police Officer.[882.73][882.73](APPLAUSE). And your service weapon that you carried on duty.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.[887.01][887.01](APPLAUSE).
You did a great job. You have a lot to be proud about.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
You have a lot to be proud about living. Thank you very much. Our last presentation this evening is gonna be from the Lejeune Memorial Garden Committee about the visitor's center, and I have Pat Walker, I believe, is here. Okay, here she comes. Pat's gonna come up and speak to us. Ron, okay, you can just go right to the podium.
Good evening. I just wanted to come before you and let you know that at this point, we have permission from the base to start the visitor's center in Lejeune Memorial Gardens. I brought with me diagrams and blueprints so that you can see what it'll look like. We'll have two bathrooms, we'll have a display center, we'll have room for two golf carts, which are very, very necessary. We have senior citizens in this community that have never seen all of the gardens because they can't walk yet. So if we have golf carts, we can take them on tours. We hope to have this manned every day, open seven days a week, so that people can see just what's growing out there. The Monfort Point Marine Association is also stepped up, and they're going to help us raise the funds for this building. It is $375,000 completed. We hope to have display cases where we can put some of the artifacts that have been left at all of the memorials, not just the Vietnam. Some of them are just unbelievable things that people have left out there, and we've collected them, we've labeled them where they came from, and we want to put these on display so that everybody can see them. The site is just to the right of the Lejeune, of the Vietnam Memorial Sidewalk. It'll be nestled back in the tree, so we keep some of the natural foliage. But on the other hand, it's going to be glass on the front and glass on the back. So when you walk in and you look out the back of the building, you're gonna be able to see all the beautiful memorials that are out there. John Senate is our architect, Pro Construction is our builder, and we are really hoping for lots of financial support so we can get this up, built, and opened possibly as soon as next spring. Because it's something that's really needed out there. People ask us all the time about bathrooms. Well, there's none within walking distance. So this will alleviate that situation. We also intend on having plaques put up in the building showing who our big donors were. This was an item that was brought up at the time the memorial was dedicated, and we, we really saw nowhere where we could put this up there at that time. But we can do it in the visitor's center. So we're going with diamond, platinum, gold, and silver, and different amounts of money. As I said, it's, it's one of the biggest tourist attractions in Onslow County, and I really think having this visitor's center out there is gonna help and bring more tourism here. Because we've got reunions going on out there, we have weddings, we have funerals, we have promotions, everything you can think of has happened in the gardens. So we're hoping that this will be an added incentive. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them. Thank you.[1192.83][1192.83](APPLAUSE).
Okay, well, this is gonna, that's the end of all the presentations tonight. I know a lot of you folks came just for the presentations. I know a lot of parents are here with their, their school-aged children, and I know that probably you may want to stay, but then in the back of your mind, you're saying, "I really need to get on home," you know, and get the kids to bed, and at least not have to be put to sleep by the business that we're gonna conduct here shortly. I want to give a lot of thanks to everybody that did come out. I want to give us, again, special recognition to Tony Marshburn and the boys team, and Coach Guidry and the girls' basketball team from Jacksonville High School. Let's give them another round of applause.[1232.51][1232.51](APPLAUSE). So with that said, I'm gonna take a few minutes, I'm gonna relax for a second, and y'all can make it for the exits if you want to. You're welcome to stay, by all means, if you want to stay, but this is your chance to make a break for it.
Stay. Stay.
She is. And you said she's still driving.
Oh, yeah.
What's she driving, that?
35 years.
I think it's a, gosh, it's a white car, or a, it's not a Cadillac.
Go get somebody. Get somebody off the street.
Where's Kevin O'Callaghan? Oh, geez, no, listen. (INAUDIBLE).
Congratulations. Great face.
Malia, Malia, go. Malia, you're present. Don't look at yourself.
How you doing, sir? You doing all right?
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, son. Now you're giving me a hug.
(LAUGHTER).
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 And we are really hoping for lots of financial support so we can get this up, built, and opened, possibly as soon as next spring. Because it's something that's really needed out there. People ask us all the time about bathrooms. Well, there's none within walking distance. So this will alleviate that situation. We also intend on having plaques put up in the building showing who our big donors were. This was an item that was brought up at the time the memorial was dedicated and we really saw nowhere where we could put this up there at that time. But we can do it in the visitor's center. So we're going with diamond, platinum, gold, and silver and different amounts of money. As I said, it's one of the biggest tourist attractions in Onslow County and I really think having this visitor's center out there is going to help and bring more tourism here. Because we've got reunions going on out there. We have weddings, we have funerals, we have promotions. Everything you can think of has happened in the gardens. So we're hoping that this will be an added incentive. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is gonna... That's the end of all the presentations tonight. I know a lot of you folks came just for the presentations. I know a lot of parents are here with their school-aged children and I know that probably you may want to stay, but then in the back of your mind you're saying, "I really need to get on home, you know, and get kids to bed and at least not have to be put to sleep by the business that we're going to conduct here shortly." I want to give a lot of thanks to everybody that did come out. I want to give again special recognition to Tony Marshburn and the boys' team and Coach Guidry and the girls' basketball team from Jacksonville High School. Let's give them another round of applause. So with that said, I'm going to take a few minutes. I'm relaxed for a second and y'all can make it for the exits if you want to. You're welcome to stay by all means if you want to stay, but this is your chance to make a break for it.
Stay.
She is. And you say she's still driving.
Oh, yeah.
What's she driving?
Thirty-five years.
I think it's a, gosh, it's a white car or a Chevy. It's not a Cadillac.
Go get somebody.
Where's Kevin O'Callaghan?
She's...
Listen.
Congratulations.
Malia, 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 you're present.
Don't look at yourself.
How you doing, sir?
Doing all right?
Thank you.
Hi.
How you doing?
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 Thank you.
All right.
He says he loves her.
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 Give me a thumbs up or something.
We'll put up X, Y, and Z.
All right, so we're going to go back into session now and I know that Mr. Massey showed me the sheet and no one had signed up for public comment. So I know sometimes we take that thing up a little prematurely, so if anybody came in and wishes to speak at public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. That one's taken. All right, so we're going to move on now to adoption of the minutes and the consent items. We have minutes from the May 1st, 2018 special workshop meeting and the May 9th, 2018 regular workshop meeting. And there are 10 items for consent on the agenda tonight. So I would entertain a motion for those two.
Does it move? Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. All 10 consent items carried. Next, we have a public hearing. This is for system development fees. And let me get to that. Okay, this is a public hearing that's required on the system development fees and Wally Hanson, Public Services Director, will be presenting this item. Wally?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. This item is a public hearing on the system development fees. I know that we've talked about this for the last several months, but I'll just give a brief overview. The system development fees are one-time fees that are paid for new construction or upfits in existing construction whereby additional water or sewer service is needed for development. So this is not the monthly payments that our citizens make as part of the, you know, their monthly utility bill. This is for one-time development and it is essentially to cover the cost of growth. So this is growth-related projects. And as you'll recall, we had new legislation enacted back in 2017 that basically said there were methodologies... I can't say that word this evening, sorry. Methodologies, thank you. Methodologies that we would have to follow in order to implement system development fees. So the three methodologies that were set forth in the legislation were a buy-in method, which is basically growth is buying into a system that you have already created. So we have additional capacities in our system so we can sell that capacity at what it costs us to build. The second method is for capital improvement or incremental cost. So that would be the projects that are in capital improvement plan. And the third is basically the combined method. So it's the method, it's one and two combined. So we can use both the incremental cost. So for us, great examples would be the treatment plants that we've built. We have a water treatment plant that we have additional water capacity in. We have a sewer treatment plant that we have additional sewer capacity in. And then the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan projects whereby we would extend our trunk facilities. So the system development fee analysis that was prepared by STANTEC recommended that because we do have existing capacity in our system and we have a robust capital improvement plan, we should move forward with the combined method. And basically, the combined method developed a calculation and that calculation is the value of our system minus a credit and that credit is essentially our outstanding principal on our debt service. And then you would divide that by your system capacity. And we have that for you tonight for each of our systems, our water and our sewer system. So the value of our water system is approximately $70 million, 70.5 million. The credit or outstanding principal on the debt that we owe is $17.6 million. And our system capacity is 7 million gallons a day. And that capacity was derived by the amount of Castle Hain wells that we have and our Black Creek aquifer wells. So we have roughly about 7 million gallons of capacity that we can provide on any given day. So through their formula, we would come out with about $2,800 per equivalent development unit. We talked about this before. Some people refer to those to equivalent residential unit and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. We did something very similar for our sewer, so that same formula. The value of our existing systems are roughly 148, 140.8 million. The credit or outstanding principal is $50 million and our capacity is 10 million gallons per day. So we have 9 million gallons per day at the land treatment site and we have an additional million gallons of capacity reserved at the base. And we talked extensively with STANTEC and because we do have costs associated with that reservation, they felt that we needed to include that million gallons along with that cost into the calculation for system development fees. So you can see, once we go through the formula, it comes out to just under $3,400, $3,366 to be exact, again, per residential unit or per equivalent development unit. So we've derived what that per equivalent development unit, or in our case, a 5/8 meter would be. And then we use the ADA, AWWA, or American Waterworks Association standard guidelines to figure out what multiplication factors to apply to that equivalent development unit. So you can see a 5/8 meter is essentially that amount that I just showed you for water and sewer. If you were to jump to a 2-inch meter, a 2-inch meter has roughly eight times the amount of capacity availability as a 5/8 meter. So it would be eight times that number. So that's how we derive this as we move forward. So here's the water fees calculated per meter size and you can see that our existing or our current system development fee that's in place right now is $2,119. The calculated is $2,799 for a variance or an additional $680. So our calculated fee is $680 more per equivalent development unit. And then you can see how that extrapolates as we go, as we move down. I think it's important to note that our current system development fee has a residential fee that is set aside from the per meter. So if you look in our current fee structure, it actually says, I think it's detached, residential detached, and residential attached. And the residential detached is essentially equivalent to the 5/8 meter or that equivalent development unit. And that was based on the study that we did back in 2009. And then the residential attached would be attached as duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, apartment buildings. And what the previous study we found is that it was recommended we give basically a reduction in the fee because when you have more dense development, you have less upkeep essentially of, you know, your infrastructure. And as an example, if you have 100-unit apartment complex, the amount of pipe in the ground, the number of fire hydrants, the lift station, it's all much more compact. Whereas if you had a 100-lot, single-family residential development, those lots are a lot larger. So you have less connections per mile of pipe. So, and I'm not sure where the reduction came in. I don't know, I'm not sure how they came up with that calculation, but it roughly worked out on the water side to about 3.5%. So, on the sewer, very similar. What you'll actually find is that our 5/8 meter or that equivalent development unit is actually $433 less calculated this time than what was calculated in the 2009 study. And again, you have that same residential attached and residential detached and the credit was actually a little bit larger, discount was a little bit larger in sewer. And it worked out to about 5.5%. And again, I'm not sure what went into that calculation, but it was something that was identified in that study. So as a side-by-side comparison, this is the total fee. The current system development fees are $5,918 for that 5/8 or equivalent development unit. And it is, the calculated is $6,166, so roughly $248 more than what was calculated in our 2009 study. And again, this is calculated off the actual cost of our water and sewer system, the cost of the projects identified in our capital improvement plan that is done in accordance with the legislation that was enacted. So for tonight, what we're asking is for Council to hold the required public hearing and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. We're asking you to consider the amount to be charged. So the maximum you could go up to is basically in this column. That is the maximum that we can charge for that one-time connection as calculated. Now, you can always choose to do something less, but the amount that you can up to, you can charge is what's identified on that slide. And then I'm also going to ask you to consider whether you implement a residential fee like what we had with our first. And basically, that's, again, geared toward that equivalent development unit or that equivalent residential unit. And, you know, as a staff, when we talked about this, if we're calculating what a equivalent development unit uses, a home, a single-family home, then we feel that we should stick to charging the homes the same thing. Typically, what you'll find in our system is we have 5/8 inch meters for residential and we have primarily 5/8 and we do have some 3/4s. And on a few, a very few, I have seen a 1-inch. But those are typically a specialty case where somebody has a pool or something else that they're looking to maintain. And we have one that's a very large residential. So tonight, up to tonight, what we've done is developed the system development fee analysis as required per the legislation. We talked about that at one of your prior workshops on January 16th. It has been to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee twice. We published the report in February. We held a 45-day public comment period that actually ended in April, April 24th, and we received no comments on the analysis. It was published on our website and there was a hard copy available in the clerk's office. We took this back to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee on May 10th for a recommendation and consideration and I have their recommendation to share with you tonight. And then tonight, we have to look at the required public hearing. And based on comments received during the public hearing, or if there are none, we can decide whether you would like to move forward with adopting the fees tonight or we can come back before you at a subsequent meeting. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
So right now, we're going to recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present wishes to speak regarding the system development fees present? If so, indicate by raising your hand. I see no one, so I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene to our council meeting. Counsel, is there any questions you have, Wally, at this time regarding what he's presented to this point?
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, what we'd like to do is bring forward the staff and the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee's recommendation. Our recommendation would be that you adopt the fees as supported by the system development fee analysis prepared by STANTEC with a residential fee equivalent to the equivalent development unit that we talked about and that it would become effective with your FY19 budget, which would be July 1st, 2018.
Counsel?
Does it move?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? With none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
All right, I don't think anybody's come in or out since the last public comment, so we're just going to go on by that. Straight to reports and I'm going to start with Mr. Jackson tonight.
This past weekend, I attended the Second Marine Recon reunion that was done at the residence of Major Jim Capers. For those who don't know Major Capers, he was actually the first black special ops officer in the military. So a lot of those guys got back together and they do it, I think, every year, I think for the last six years. I guess they had probably about 150 people or so in his yard. So a lot of those folks were at hotels and did a lot of other things in the community and they were glad to be back. Also, this past weekend, Soul Society had an event at the youth council where Soul Society actually bring out youth and actually adults who are artists, authors, singers, writers, and anybody else, poets. And actually PBS, a program, came out and, from UNC TV, and interviewed and I don't know exactly the date that that would be out, but that was a good opportunity for them. And then on, I guess you will probably bring it up hopefully as well, Splash Pad will be opening at Northeast Creek Park on the 31st at 10 o'clock. That's when they're having an opening ceremony. So hopefully, everybody will come out for that and that's all.
Mr. Biedler?
I placed in front of you a copy of Onwasa's annual report for the previous year. We, on the board of directors, from Onwasa, myself and Mayor Pro Tim was our, have been busy, like the council, with budgets and capital improvement programs. So I was going to spend about 15 minutes summarizing the annual report, but I thought, I bet this council would be better served if they had the time to study it themselves and grasp more information from this. So you had the report.
I actually begged him not to do it.
I appreciate that.
Very quick TDA, Mayor. We had the Taste of Moonshine at Walton's Distillery, North Carolina Weekend was at the distillery last month and to witness the community's open house, it was a mix of family food, music, and dancing. They offered tours and a gift shop there as well. The program will air Thursday at 9:00 PM on UNC TV, so please tune in to look at that. Deborah Holt Knoll visited Mountford Point Marines Museum. The host of North Carolina Weekend visited Jacksonville Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. Her and her photographer, Robert Gunther, were here to cover the Jacksonville-onslow Arts Council HE Art Program, which features young artists. Speaking of the gardens, we had two reunion, military reunion tours through the gardens since our last TDA meeting. One was the recon group that was just mentioned earlier. They were stationed here between 1965 and 1970. Pretty interesting group that included some locals. About 70 people were from out of town. We continue to explore those opportunities. Additionally, toured officers from Jacksonville, Florida, Monday that were here to also give a presentation to one of our oldest police officers, I guess, 90?
Yes, sir.
90 years old? They were very appreciative and we, and one had a father who was actually a Mountford Point Marine, so they were pretty excited. The state has a new website. It's called visitnc.com, which has launched and we've made some investments in that website and of course, working those opportunities. Memorial Day opportunity, there will be a Memorial Day service at the Veterans Cemetery. Also, visitation to the memorial gardens is promoted. Want to make sure that people know it's out there and hopefully take the opportunity and time to go visit the gardens while they're here. So to end my report, we want to welcome Donna Hammond, she is our new Tourism Director for the Chamber, for the county. She's welcomed here from Swansboro. She's been a great asset so far and we look forward to continue to working with her. And that's just a brief summary of our report to keep you up to date.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Warden? Thanks, sir. I, for one, am disappointed that we didn't get the 15-minute discussion on Onwasa tonight, but there were several pieces of information that would just seem to be missing from there. I didn't see any facts or figures, so. But anyway, proud to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Biedler?
Mayor, Members of Council, it's hard to believe that this is Memorial Day weekend. May is moving by quickly. What that means is Monday, we will be closed and with that, of course, sanitation services will not be given. I'd like to remind folks that if you're normally picked up on Monday, you'll be picked up on Tuesday. Tuesday will shift to Wednesday. Thursday will remain Thursday and Friday will remain Friday. So again, with Memorial Day, all offices of City Hall will be closed, but again, we do encourage people to make sure they get the garbage cans out on the correct date. Secondly, as...
Secondly, as Councilmember Jackson mentioned, it's actually Wednesday. I was thinking like you were, it was Thursday, the 31st, but on Wednesday, the 30th, at 10 o'clock, we will have the opening of our second Splash Pad. Last year, we had literally thousands of young people. We had an average attendance of 35 a day throughout the entire day, and it was a great success at Jackham Yet. So Jackham Yet will be opening up this coming weekend, and then we will have the Splash Pad at Northeast Creek Park. Also, would remind you that starting this weekend, we will have the pool at the...
Holiday City Mobile Home.
Holiday City Mobile Home Park, sorry about that. That will also be opening from 10 until 4 for those who would like to come swim. It's open to the public. There's a nominal fee. We will have lifeguards on duty. For our One City Moment, we would like to take just a minute to talk about a couple of items. If you don't have any plans for later tonight, no, I'm not inviting you to a pizza party, but I hope that you will tune in on CBS 48 Hours tonight at 10 o'clock. The gentleman on the screen on the left, these are police officers of the city. I think you may recognize them. Mr. Ramirez, Detective Ramirez is there on the left. They went to New York City for the filming of a session relative to a major crime that occurred in this community several years ago in 2013. That was where we had a serial rapist, and through the efforts, especially of Detective Ramirez, we were able to solve that crime. And that is going to be featured tonight at 10 o'clock on CBS 48 Hours. I think we have a couple of other pictures where they were actually filming there. Next picture, Glenn? Okay. The other thing we would like to mention is XY Brown. Councilmember mentioned XY as 90 years old. XY swears that he's not 90 years old, but we don't know whether that's because he's older or younger. But, you know, he was featured on the Raleigh television station, WRAL. And not only did that show locally, meaning in this region, it actually went viral. And people, officers in Jacksonville, Florida, the other Jacksonville, saw that, and they made arrangements to come up here this past Monday to personally meet XY. Had over a dozen of the police sheriff's personnel, as you know, Jacksonville and Duval County are one organization, they're not two different governments, so they're actually called a sheriff and police department. Here, you can see XY being hugged by one of the folks from the Sheriff's Department down in Jacksonville, Florida. As was mentioned, one of the gentlemen actually trained here in the Vietnam War. One of them had a father who is a Monford Pointer. Several of them had served active duty here in the 80s, and the group really had a great time, and they toured the Memorial Gardens, and here you can see the contingent from Jacksonville, Florida. XY is a rare, rare commodity of dedication. You will notice they actually all had T-shirts that they wore that said, "I'm XY Brown." And on the front, they had a picture of XY's face. And of course, there's Chief In arrow with XY. But I know you're all proud, as we all are, of what he has done in this community. Mayor, you served with him. Would you like to make any comments?
He was always good for a chuckle. XY was one of my favorite people of all times. I mean, he was just a, I always made a comment when I was a deputy chief, and I didn't mean this as an insult to our police officers, but he always did the work of about three. And he wasn't getting paid but part-time to do it. He would make trips as far west as Morganton to deliver juveniles to a detention center, or he checked houses. He did the housing checks while people were on vacation. He did everything you asked him to do and always did it with the zest of a 20-year-old. And I don't think he's slowed down a lot. He may have slowed down a little bit. You sure can't tell it, especially with his actions out at the school crossing, you still don't want to reach the line. That's probably not going to be a good idea for you. But the thing is, I hope we can keep him around a lot longer, because he is a positive. He's a very good positive for that police department and always has been. I remember, as a deputy police chief, having people come in and make complaints. Of course, if you do a good enough job, you're always going to get complained on, ain't it right? Okay. But, you know, I'd get a lot of complaints, and I don't mean this as an insult to anybody that filed a complaint that's listening to this broadcast, but, you know, I always had a special place for most of the complaints. It was that round circular file by my desk. So my hat's off to the man. He's a legend, to say the least.
Absolutely.
And, you know, he's always been involved in the community. He was very, very involved in his lodge, his shrine...
Mount Hore Lodge.
Right, Mount Hore Lodge. It always used to fascinate me when I was invited to go and see them riding the camels across the desert. That really just made my day. But anyway, you have to see it to understand it. But anyway...
Way being temple.
That's right. But XY, if you're watching this, XY, I thank the world of you, and I've enjoyed all the time that I've been able to spend with you over the years as a police officer.
Last comment would be, thank you again for your leadership and the dedication and the just joy of working with you each.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Mr. Carter, do you have something? How about you, Mr. Massey?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's have your motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.